Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, June 21st, 2010 meeting, special meeting of the Evanston City Council. First item is public comments. I'm going to call up the first four speakers. You each have three minutes apiece. And if you'll come and stand over there and speak after the person in front of you is done, that would be terrific. Please give your name and address when you speak. Timothy Schoolmaster, Joanne Zalomi, Brian Scott, and Tim Gobat are first. Go ahead, Mr. Schoolmaster.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the council, and members of the public. I'm here to speak about the actuarial report for the police and fire pension funds. This has just recently been released. We have not had time to review this. It's on the agenda this evening for action. There's really no reason why it has to be adopted this evening, and we would respectfully request that you pass this so we have time to look at this. Earlier this year, we approached Mr. Lyons. Both boards approached Mr. Lyons to do a joint actuarial report. For whatever reason, he decided to go with Gabriel Roder Smith, what they had in previous years. It's a respected firm. However, the Blue Ribbon Committee on Page 17 had recommended an independent assessment of the actuarial model should be taken at least every three years, so we would like to look into that further. I also see buried somewhere in here the layoff of three firefighters proposed. These are the bedrock of your public safety net in Evanston. I've seen some shenanigans at the department head and other levels where we all took pay cuts, but some of us took smaller pay cuts than others, and some of us took other adjustments in salary, but somehow the people who actually do the work are, seem to be suffering at this. So this is a joint effort. We would all like to be part of the solution on this, but I would respectfully urge you to reconsider this short-sighted decision to cut these three positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Burris, we do not usually respond to public comments. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, citizens of Evanston, my name is Brian Scott. I'm a proud member and the president of the Evanston Firefighters Association, IAFF, Local 742. I stand before you this evening with my fellow firefighters and concerned citizens because a considerable injustice is about to occur. The city manager, the city council have decided without any public discussion, without an open council vote, to lay off three firefighters without any legitimate economic justification. Not only will this have an immediate and detrimental impact on our public safety, it's simply unfair to your firefighters. Now let's be perfectly clear. The city manager wants to paint this in economic terms, but it really, it's not about money. It's about exerting unfair pressure on the firefighters as the attempt to negotiate a contract in good faith at the expense of public safety. Last Tuesday, I was notified by Chief Clyburn that the layoffs were to occur, and my immediate first question was, is what's the economic justification for these layoffs? I was told that the firefighters had not settled with the city with their collective bargaining agreement, and that had an unexpected expense to the city that wasn't budgeted for. I asked him specifically what those items were. He told me, well, the other employee groups have had to give back holiday pay incentives. They've had to have their health insurance increased by 10 percent. I said to him that those things were already negotiated and agreed to by the firefighters and to tell the city manager that we'll give those things back immediately retroactive to March 1st. That offer was dismissed. Now since the firefighters have already, have not received any wage increase for the current fiscal year, and given those two economic concessions, there is no economic impact for our collective bargaining process at the present time. There's none. I was also told that as long as we just go along with whatever the police officers were awarded in arbitration, just go with whatever asked me settled with, a couple weeks later, this all will go away. Is this how the city now negotiates in good faith? We're going to lay off firefighters for arbitrations that haven't begun, for awards that don't even exist? In the future, is the city going to start off every contract negotiation by laying off a couple firefighters just in case things don't go their way? Aren't we allowed to negotiate our own contracts? Or do we have to kind of just concede whatever the other bargaining units come up with or else? This is a blatant attempt to restrict our ability to bargain in good faith and to restrict our statutory right to arbitrate. Police negotiations went on for over a year.
Brian, I need you to wrap up, or you can get another speaker to concede some of their time to you.
Mr. Gobat, would you concede your time? Thank you very much. And I apologize, Madam Mayor, I'll speed it up. This is a blatant attempt to restrict our ability to negotiate in good faith and to restrict our statutory right to arbitrate. Police negotiations went on for over a year, and yet not one police officer was laid off. Why are we not afforded that same respect and those same rights? And to make matters much, much worse, this unfair pressuring tactic will have a significant and negative impact on public safety. You all well know that this department is already understaffed by every industry standard, by every community comparable, and further cuts in staffing is going to worsen this already unsafe condition. Fire, EMS companies are going to close. Response times are going to increase in a profession where seconds and minutes can mean the difference between life and death. Thankfully, last February, every member of the city council voted 9-0 to maintain our response capability. What's changed? What's changed? The citizens of Evanston should be outraged by this. They pay top dollar for their fire protection and EMS services, and last week, the city council and city staff decided without any public consideration, without any open council vote, to cut those services. You would think a decision of this magnitude affecting public safety to this extent that that would demand full transparency. I appeal to the council to reverse these layoffs tonight so that we can maintain our service to the city, respect labor, and respect that collective bargaining process. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Joanne Zalomi, and I live at 1021 Brown Avenue. I'm here to speak about the layoff of three members of the Evanston Fire Department. As many of you know, I lived at 808 Judson when it burned in 1996, the worst fire in Evanston for many years. So the staffing of the Evanston Fire Department is of special interest to me. In addition, my neighbor's townhouse experienced a kitchen fire about three years ago. Firefighters said of the 808 Judson fire that if it had occurred in the middle of the night, some of us might not have gotten out alive. The Evanston Fire Department and the other departments performed exceptionally that night. A few firefighters suffered injuries, and one could have died in that fire. What is the need for these layoffs? As you know, the Evanston firefighters received no pay raise for this current year, and as Brian has just said, they have agreed to some givebacks. The village of Skokie has a population of just under 67,000. They have three fire stations and 122 firefighters. Their daily staffing averages are 28. Evanston has a population of about 75,000. We have five fire stations and 107 firefighters. I would venture to guess that Evanston has more buildings than Skokie and an older housing stock. We also probably have more high-rise buildings than Skokie. Our daily staffing could go to 25 with the planned cuts. And our fire department averages 48 calls a day. The number of calls have continued to go up over the decades, and the responsibilities of the firefighters has increased also. And the ratings of our fire department also affects our home insurance rates. And as a Realtor, I want to continue to tell the buyers in Evanston that we have a top-notch fire department. I did not plan for my condo to burn down, nor did my neighbors plan for their kitchen to catch on fire. You never think it will happen to you. All of us that are at daily risk of a fire or a medical emergency. I think most citizens consider safety to be the prime service of their, that their community should provide. Whether it's a fire, medical, or police emergency, a few minutes can make the difference between life and death. So I urge the city to rescind these layoffs. Thank you.
Tim, you have about a minute and a half if you want to take it. Okay. Marty Rafas, Bill Brennan, Janet Alexander-Davis, and Kevin O'Connor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Marty Rafas. I am vice president of Local 742, and I just wanted to address--
Would you please, Ms. Rafas, to remind everyone to give their address?
I'm with the Local 742 Firefighters Association. I don't live in town. Here, I just wanted to address the issue when, you know, many comments have been brought up as far as we can afford the staffing cuts because we're going to rely on mutual aid, auto aid, however you want to call it. No matter which way you frame it, you're increasing your response times. And roughly December 26th, 2008, that date, remember, rings clear in my mind because it was the first day that I was change shifts, and there was a significant fire on Sheridan Road. From my recollection, there was no civilian injuries, and I don't believe there was really any firefighter injuries. That night, when we're talking about relying on mutual aid, well, Matt happened to have a significant fire themselves. They had an escalated alarm before we did. It took over a half hour before mutual aid companies came into town. We relied on 26 men and women of this department to put out that fire on Sheridan Road until additional help could get there. The men and women of Local 742 and the fire department are fully dedicated and continue to do our job wholeheartedly, and no matter what you throw at us, we're going to do that job to the best of our ability and professionally. Fires will always go out. We're trying to minimize what kind of damage can happen during those periods of waiting for additional help. Everything is prioritized. We can only do so much with the manpower that we are given. So with that being said, please, tonight, reverse your decision. Do it in an open council meeting to save the three firefighters sitting in front of you, the newly hired, the ones that you've already paid the money for them to go into the academy, go through paramedic school. Let's talk about the budget with that. Thank you.
My name is Bill Brennan. I live at 2741 Marcy Avenue. I am also a firefighter/paramedic in the city of Highland Park, Local 822. So not only being a citizen, understanding the fire department for the past 12 years, there's an intimate knowledge of the job and what it takes when it comes to manpower. As a citizen, I have expectations, a level of expectation of service from the fire department. And as a fireman, and I think I speak for all firemen here, we all have an expectation of ourselves of how we deliver that service, and with layoffs, both are affected. The fire service is about teamwork. You see us traveling around the cities. We are always in clans, going with each other, and that's for a reason. In any sort of situation, emergency, medical, or fire, there is a tremendous amount of work to do in a very short period of time. Time's not on our side in emergencies. When you take into consider fire, the fire itself, the smoke, the toxic gases, everything increases exponentially. And if increased time happens, you're going to have an increased amount of those things that are really going to be against anybody getting out of their house, or having the men and women of the Evanston Fire Department get to the house to help people who live there get out. With layoffs, you increase the workload and the pressures on the fire department to get and maintain that expectation that we carry with us every day. We treat people that we meet as if they're our family, and in this case, my wife and two kids are protected by these crews here. And when I am at work, they are the ones that would be, be the ones protecting my family, and that matters a lot to me. With layoffs, you will have a possible increase in reliance on mutual aid, and with that, you are taking firemen from surrounding communities. Even though they are great fire departments, there is no guarantee that they will be ready when we need them. And there's, when we are calling them, we're taking them away from service of their own communities. Understanding that budgets are tight everywhere, I just urge the elected officials and the city manager to sit down with the union that is willing to figure out a solution to the budget crisis. The one fact is that with layoffs, there will be a ripple effect felt. When that ripple effect and when that time comes is very difficult to predict, but the fact is that with layoffs, there will be a day that when minutes are needed most, there will be a delay in the fire service to arrive. And as the citizen here in Evanston, I don't think that gamble is acceptable. Thank you very much for listening.
Madam Mayor, city council members, and the city manager. My name is Janet Alexander-Davis. I live at 1726 Leland Avenue. I've lived in Evanston for 67 years. I'm here to make a couple of points about the Evanston Firefighters Union is making their case not to undergo loss of manpower, and I understand that. I say to the union, please make your points about the cut in manpower, but do not use scare tactics to make those points. Those scare tactics include a flyer which states our communities will be at risk if the city council agrees with the city manager to reduce your force by three people. In a flyer distributed in my community, you use words like, and I quote, "in danger" with exclamation mark, "fire/paramedic companies will close." Why would our city manager risk your family's safety? I watch most city council meetings and have felt some pain when our elected officials and the city manager were hired to make the tough decisions. They made them by cutting 40 to 50 city employees. This will add to the workload of those employees that are left. As far as I know, those cuts had nothing to do with you. So you are one of many sections of Evanston city government and city services that have felt the pain of people losing their jobs. You are proposing your jobs, you are proposing your jobs are more important than those that have already lost their jobs. I would like to use the analogy that appears in the Good Book about the body. The body in this case being our city employees and governing bodies. I would hate to lose my eyesight, and losing my ability to walk would be terrible, too. Is losing my eyesight more important than losing my ability to walk? Is losing my hearing more important than losing my lips with which to eat with? So on and so on is the point I'm trying to make. The fire department is so important to the safety of our community, and I thank you for your service more than you know. However, if we are to hold on to services we can no longer afford, we might as well not hire a fiscally responsible city manager or a council with guts, guts you have, to make the hard budgetary decisions. The body of our system of government has to change and change now. We no longer can push hard decisions onto another time or to the next city council body. We just can't. My final point is how many of the firefighters live here in Evanston. In addition, in addition to working here, it makes a difference when you live here and are affected by the decisions of our elected officials and our city formal government. How many of you live here to really be impacted by what you are suggesting we do?
Janet, I'm sorry, I need you to wrap it up.
Okay. You are not thinking of the well-being of Evanston residents because your language seems to mean you want the residents to be scared. Our country is undergoing enough people trying to make us scared of our environment. Come on, don't do the same thing to us locally. Tell your story, believe the fear tactics out of it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Halliburton. Two instances, we had a brush fire in the back. I walked over to the fire station, and I said, "We have a fire in the back." They said, "Go back and call 911," which indicated that the fire department dispatches from different areas for different circumstances. I don't have a problem with that, and I don't think that however they dispatch should be made public. But another scenario, if you had a relative that had a heart attack, and you called 911, and the response was later than three or four minutes, and then they came up and your relative passed, and then you got to call me as a funeral director. You've lost your relative. But if somebody indicated to you that you lost your relative, but we got some beautiful trees. So I said that to say that if the budget is cut, I would rather see less trees being planted in the city of Evanston so that we look like Lake Forest, as opposed to cutting out safety. Fire Department, Police Department, all of these on public health are for our safety. Fire Department is for our safety, and I don't know, I wouldn't want to be in the city manager's shoes to decide what to cut. But as a citizen who knows nothing about the operation of the fire department, knows nothing about the city budget, I would much rather see the money go to firemen's salary for the community's protection than to go to some trees or some other ways. And I just ask on behalf of the community that I serve that you look further and look at another way to save that money rather than getting rid of the fire department. Thank you.
Kevin O'Connor, 1227 and a half, Isabella. I don't know of any citizens, city staff, or politicians that aren't truly and enormously grateful for our first responders, our Evanston firefighters, and police officers. That being said, I received last week in my mailbox this non-factual, fear-mongering, and threatening pamphlet from the Evanston Firefighters Union. I don't buy anything that is said within, and I've spoken to many fellow citizens that also find this pamphlet very much outrageous. As taxpayers, we want to live within our means, not bust our budget that's, or any more than it's already been busted. To ask for anything that is not sustainable going forward is simply not, or simply unacceptable. Finally, let us hope that the firefighters' union, who gave $500 in labor support to Aldermanic and mayoral candidates in the last municipal election, and the politicians that took that money in support, would realize that it creates an unrealistic set of expectations on both sides, and is also a conflict of interest. The political actions by the union and those receiving them are simply unsustainable and unethical. On behalf of the taxpayers of Evanston, please stop it. We can no longer afford it. Thank you.
Next is, let's see, Peter Butterfield, Tony Gilpin, Mike Vasilko, and Bruce Plasmeyer.
My name is Peter Butterfield. I live at 1008 Judson in Evanston. I don't want to make any sweeping kinds of comments. I just want to say that the Evanston Fire Department saved my life about five years ago with incredible professionalism in a situation where I was suffering complete respiratory failure, and they were there in an instant. I also watched a city fireman, firewoman, save a woman and her dog last winter. Very courageous. I think she froze her head, but I can't see, we have to prioritize. I think scare tactics are not. I mean, the fact is that it is scary to think you don't have adequate police or fire protection. As far as I'm concerned, they can sweep my street every other week or whatever. I mean, there've got to be other things. So that's about what I have to say. Thank you.
Tony Gilpin, 2414 Pioneer Road. I was going to have some notes here, I was going to say something else, but wanted to change my remarks after listening to Brian speak, and I don't have the statistics here and the firefighters do. But let's note the extraordinary thing that they're doing here that I think we all need to take note of. They are offering, and have offered, to take no pay increase, to give back concession after concession, and what they're doing this for is to preserve the jobs of their fellow workers, their brothers and sisters on the job. They're doing this, this is an extraordinary thing. We don't see this happen that often among people who are willing to make this kind of sacrifice to their own benefits. They're doing this to preserve public safety in our community, and they're doing this to protect the jobs of three of their fellow workers. And I think we need to recognize the importance of what they're doing. They realize how important it is to protect the safety of this community, and so they are giving back. They've offered the city everything that they can to preserve these jobs. And in this, at this time, in this climate, in this economic situation that we face, preserving these kind of jobs should be paramount for this city as well as preserving the jobs of other city workers here. And we don't want to see cuts to city services for AFSMI members either, and we should oppose all of those cuts, but let's recognize the sacrifice that these firefighters are making by offering these givebacks. There's not much else they can do to try to protect these jobs and protect public safety as they have. So I think they deserve to be applauded for that. As a citizen of this community who values public safety, who values the kind of compassion that this community is known for, I think that's something we ought to recognize in them. So I thank them for that. I thank them for what they're willing to do for public safety here, and I thank them for what they're willing to do to preserve three jobs, to help protect my family and all of the families in this community. Thank you.
My name's Mike Vasilko, 2728 Reese Avenue, Evanston, Illinois. In my business, I have the unfortunate opportunity to see whole companies go out of business and vacate their office spaces. In some cases, I have the good fortune to redevelop those spaces for solvent companies. Many people from all over, from all walks of life are losing their jobs, some their homes. In budget-starved communities, and Evanston is no exception, property owners are already overtaxed. We can't afford to pay more taxes to avoid the layoffs of municipal workers. We can't afford to pay more taxes to avoid the layoffs of municipal workers, including firemen, paramedics, and police officers. There needs to be a new source of revenue. What I've been promoting for the better part of a year is for the city of Evanston to embark on a significant venture that would make Evanston a point of destination for visitors near and far. Substantial entertainment tax revenue would follow, more than enough revenue to hire municipal workers, not lay off municipal workers. I ask again that the city council give the Performing Arts District serious consideration for the ambitious revenue-producing proposal that it is. All I'm asking is that you give the idea fair consideration. I think it would help. Thank you.
Is Bruce Plasmeyer here?
I can see right there.
Okay. Thank you. Next is, I'm having trouble reading it, Reggie 2810 Thayer?
Peggy.
Peggy, sorry. Peggy Camar and Christine Young.
Will you write that down?
Yeah, you better write it.
Hi, my name is Peggy Camarchivacole. I'm at 2810 Thayer in Evanston, and I have been a resident of Evanston for quite a long time. I'm also a nurse at Evanston Hospital. It really does disturb me that these firefighters are being laid off. I completely understand the addressing of budget, but when you try to cut into people's safety, it's a big, it's a big problem. As a nurse, I realize that how important it is to have these people come and take care of these patients immediately. If you've ever had any kind of emergency situation in your home, you would understand that. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
My name is Christine Young. I live at 2106 Maple. I've been a resident of Evanston for over 25 years. My personal background is in medical illustration. I have done a significant amount of illustration for emergency medicine and worked and attended paramedic school. I have a tremendous amount of sympathy for the job that the firefighters do. I was in paramedic school in Region 10. I have a concept of what it is, not only in the medicine side, to receive a patient in the emergency room in fine order, but what it is to deliver that patient in fine order. I would like to remind the city council and the mayor that in 135-year history of the Evanston Fire Department, including during the Depression, not one firefighter has been laid off. I think that's very important because, in fact, what the city has always committed is a degree of a relationship with its fire department that has been unwavering. I was actually rather shocked to receive the material that was provided to me, and I did not know about the layoff. I understand that the city of this size is struggling, but the problem is, is that there are national standards that need to be met, and there should be a consciousness about that that the city and the city aldermen should assume. There is no responsibility, or there are no, you won't lose federal money because you don't meet those national standards. You'll not have anything taken away from you if, in fact, you take away the jobs of these firemen. And in fact, I believe that's true, that they are staffed at a significant deficit. And I live in a city where I pay top taxes. I don't pay 75% taxes. I don't pay 50% taxes. I pay a lot of taxes. And in that sense, I would also like to have a significant commitment to that city service that I pay for, and I think that's very important. I think the firemen have met the economic demands that the city has asked for. I think they've been over backwards in their negotiation. I'm troubled by the concept that an accountant would be, in fact, an expert in fire safety and have an understanding of what a fire department should be staffed at, because these are national standards. These aren't local standards, and I think that's very important. Mutual aid is not reliable. That's been proven over and over again. The increasing high-rise condos are significantly impact what the fire demands of the fire department, and that, to me, is a concern. The city council has made a commitment to development. You have approved these buildings. I think you also should approve the safety of these buildings. There hasn't been a significant problem or a significant-
Ms. Yeller, I'm sorry, I need you to wrap up.
That's fine. And I think there is no recent reminder of what a lab fire at Northwestern would promote or what true devastation could be in life, and I think it's a problem. And I don't like the idea of that the financial expenses of things in the city that are very costly would mean that the firefighters wouldn't have their jobs, because I don't think it's fair.
Thank you. City manager?
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. I don't know if this is the appropriate time or-
This is the appropriate time.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to comment on the city's collective bargaining negotiations with the fire union. Negotiations began in December 2009. With it out in agreement, the discussions moved to impasse. There was also not a resolution of an agreement and mediation between the parties. On April 7, 2010, prior to the beginning of arbitration, then-fire chief Alan Brokowski, deputy-fire chief Clyber and I met with the union in an attempt to settle the contract. While progress was made on some economic issues, the union indicated that in order to accept a reduced economic package, the agreement must include new permanent language, which will require any change in minimum staffing of the department to become a mandatory subject of bargaining. The city could not agree to this fundamental change in management rights, and a deal was not reached. Currently, staffing levels of the department are at the discretion of management, and funding of these positions are at the discretion of the city council. If negotiation on staffing levels was unsuccessful under this proposed language, then the matter would be subject to mediation and arbitration. As the city and fire union prepared for arbitration, I determined that it was necessary for the city to reserve funds for any salary and benefit costs that would be awarded through arbitration. In order to do this, I identified the potential costs associated with the loss at arbitration to the approximate equivalent cost of three firefighter positions. Prior to issuing the layoff notices to the three firefighters, interim chief Clyber asked to meet with the union again in an attempt to settle the contract. He was advised by the union that it would not be able to meet until after June 1 due to the unavailability of its attorney. A meeting was then scheduled for June 8. The union canceled this meeting and advised it would rather have the matter resolved in arbitration. In recent days, the fire union has indicated it would agree to salary and benefit economic concessions for the term of the agreement. However, the offer comes only with a significant concession of management rights on the part of the city. The city will continue to work with the fire union to bring this matter to a conclusion.
Thank you. Next, we have the March 1, 2010 Police and Firefighter Pension Actuarial Report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Lyons, the Assistant City Manager, and also in the role of City Treasurer, will make the report.
Good evening, Marty Lyons, Treasurer. I am here to just provide a very brief overview, and then our consulting actuary from Gabriel Roder Smith and the person of Amy Williams will present a presentation that documents the report on which you have, you both have the PowerPoint and you have the draft report. Just a point of clarification, this is a draft report because it is something that you do approve. When we present the audit each year, it's something that is accepted and placed on file. This year, you're looking at, as is the case in all years, to approve a report that is then used for our pension funding purposes. One thing I would like to point out on page 5 of 139, or three of four of the report, in a sentence that says, in the one paragraph, that GRS has provided an estimated average rate of return for their other police and fire pension fund clients, that should have said their, the assumed rate of return. It says assumed everywhere else around that, and somehow I left it out there. And I noticed it from an article in Evanston Now that he got the article right. I got my report wrong when I went back and looked at it. So it is their assumed rate of return. We are not saying that the average rate of return received by their clients is 6.75. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Alderman, ready? Page 5 of 139.
And I would be happy to send that correction to the council in an email following up. And then just one final point. As you'll see in this presentation, we have been talking a lot about expenditure reductions, but as this report will show, this is, will involve an expenditure increase, and it will be an expenditure increase associated with police and fire services. So the city is continuing on with a commitment to fund police and fire pension costs. And with that, I'll turn it over to Amy Williams for her presentation, and then also be happy to answer questions after the fact.
Good evening. My name is Amy Williams, and this is Lance Weiss. We're from Gabriel Roder Smith &amp; Company, and we're here to present the draft actuarial valuation results of the Police and Firefighters Pension Fund as of March 1, 2010. We're going to start the presentation with some background on actuarial valuations and then get into the actuarial valuation results. This slide here has the different components that go into performing the actuarial valuations. The top box is covered person data, so we collect census information about each individual participant that participates in the pension funds. So that would include date of birth, date of hire, salary, gender, benefit amount for the retirees. The next is fund description data. That includes the benefit provisions, includes eligibility for when members start receiving benefits, the benefit levels, the cost of living increases. Next is actuarial assumptions. That's how we project the benefits that will be paid from the pension funds. We'll go into more details on the underlying actuarial assumptions in the following slides. We use these first three components in order to project the benefits that will be paid in the future from the pension funds, and then we discount those future benefits back to a present value as of the valuation date of March 1, 2010. Next, we use what we call an actuarial cost method, and we allocate the costs of those pension benefits over the careers of the members. The cost of the benefits attributable to past service is called the actuarial accrued liability, which we'll discuss on the following slides. The cost attributable to the current year is called the normal cost, and then the cost attributable to future years would be the present value of future normal costs. Finally, we collect the asset data, so the assets that have been accumulated to pay for those benefits. We use all of that information in order to produce our actuarial valuation report in which we calculate the contribution requirements and the funded ratio, so how much in assets has been accumulated in comparison to the liabilities or the obligations of the pension This slide has additional detail on the actuarial assumptions. We split them into economic assumptions and demographic assumptions. So the economic assumptions are the investment return, so what we assume that the assets that will be used to pay those benefits, what they'll earn in the future. The payroll growth assumption, so how we assume that overall pay will grow, and also how pay will grow as it relates to cost of living increases. And a population growth assumption, so we assume usually that there are the same number of active members in all future years. Then we have the demographic assumption, so retirement rates, the probability of participants retiring at each future year once they're eligible, promotional and step pay increases, so how pay will increase as it relates to getting promoted or moving through the ranks. Then disability rates, turnover, and mortality. This slide details the actuarial assumptions that were used in the valuation that we performed. The first is the investment return assumption. For the 2010 valuation, we assumed that the underlying assets would earn 7%. This decreased from 7.25%, which was used in the 2009 valuation. And when we develop the investment rate of return, we need to look at how the underlying assets are invested. That's limited by statutes. It's constrained to 45% maximum invested in equities. The next is we use an actuarial asset valuation method, so we smooth asset value when we're performing the valuation.
I have a question on the rate of return of the assets.
Okay.
The planned assets over the last four, I think it's four years you average, or five years? Four years, four years. For the police department, the rate of return averaged 2.5% over four years, up some years, down other years, way down some years. On the fire department, the rate of return on planned assets was a little over 3%. Why in the world? I mean, I know there was bickering about reducing it from 7.25% to 7%, and now some discussion about 6.75%. But how does that, how does that sync with what the reality is? And the higher the rate of return figured, and the less chance there is of either fund meeting that, equates to the taxpayers paying more to keep up?
The investment rate of return that we use in the valuation is a long-term assumption, so it's not meant to project the investment return over, you know, a two-year period, a five-year period, but it's intended to represent the return over a long period, you know, 30 years, 40 years, 50 years. So the investment rate of return that we're using is the expectation on the average that'll be earned over that long period.
Well, that's what you're using. However, you make a specific point of commenting that it is higher than other projection, the state, et cetera. It's a higher rate. We're averaging, we're using a higher rate, right?
Compared with other municipalities, is that-
Compared, yes. You say that right now, or for the last year or so, 6.75 has been being used. Is that correct?
We were asked, we were asked to provide the average assumed rate of return for other comparable municipalities that we perform valuations for, and that average rate of return was lower. However, that takes into account all of the funds that we're doing, including those who are investing differently from the city. So for example, one of the pension funds that we work with is using 5.5% assumption, but they're invested mostly in bonds and they're not investing in equities, so their underlying investments would warrant a lower rate of return because of how they've been invested.
Well, there is, there is a segment of our community who believes that the city of Evanston has dropped the ball on the pension contributions. And my point really is that it's very hard to keep up for the taxpayers to continue to dip into our pockets when the rate of return of planned assets is just always a percent or two lower than the reality. And so we have to make up that difference of what you're projecting the amount should be. I mean, that's, that's a fact, you know? If it's projected 7% and they come in at 2%, who's going to make up the difference? The city. It increases our unfunded liability, plain and simple.
Yes, to the extent that the investments fall short of the assumption, there is a loss to make up.
Yes, yes.
And conversely, if, you know, they earn more than the assumption, you know, then it does reduce it.
Right, and I'm looking forward to that day with all the other taxpayers of this town.
And I think Lance maybe has something to add.
I just wanted to add that, as Jamie said, the assumption is a long-term assumption. So it's not really meant to reflect what happened this year, last year, or the year before. It's meant to reflect what'll happen going forward over the next 30 years. And what we're saying by using 7% is that, on average, over the- And what we're saying by using 7% is that on average, over the next 30 years or so, we expect that the funds will earn, again, on average, 7%. We know that it's not going to happen every, each and every year. Some years you're going to earn more, some years you're going to earn less. It would be a coincidence if you earn exactly 7%. But on average, we expect 7%. And you're right, in years in which you earn less, costs go up. In years in which you earn more, costs go down. We're just trying to come up with an average.
What is, is that the average for the last 20 years? Tell me that it's been 90%.
I don't know. I don't know. We can certainly check on that. Do you know any?
I don't know history back that far.
Yeah.
Alderman Bruce?
I, what I wanted to ask before is hoping Mr. Schoolmaster was staying because I always want your opinion on everything on this. I agree completely with Alderman Rainey on, on these, these assumptions of the 7% investment return. Obviously, it's a 20-year long-term projection or 30-year long-term projection. But it's really a crapshoot. And it seems that with past history on these pension funds, it seems it would make, be prudent to have a more conservative approach to these assumptions. 7% does not seem conservative to me. And once again, going to Alderman Rainey's point, it comes back on the taxpayer. Secondly, Mr. Schoolmaster said that he had indicated to Mr. Lyons that they would be willing to do a combined actuarial report, that we would have another group look at the actuarial information. Just nod for me if I'm saying that right.
Two funds and the city would agree on the assumptions.
And, and I'm wondering why that didn't happen. And the next question, which would go to Mr. Schoolmaster's, how long would it take for them to review the information? I just, once again, these assumptions are putting us over a barrel expecting returns and expecting us to put less money in than I think we're going to need to and putting it off to next generations as we've done for decades now.
Marty Lyons, treasurer. I do agree with the statement regarding the assumed rate of return. If we changed our assumed rate of return down to the average of six and three quarters this year, we would probably see a further increase between $400,000 and $600,000 on this year's tax levy. So I agree completely that it is pushing it off into the future. It points to where we're at though, right now with an ability to pay. This is changing the increase from 1.2 million to $1.8 million this year, changing the whole levy from 14.2 to $16 million. So there's, in setting the actuarial assumptions at 7%, we shouldn't just focus on that one, but that's the one that changed. There was some, some concern over this next year, the ability to pay. And if you note in the report, we're, we're looking at it saying seven and a quarter, or 7% may not be enough and that we may need to continue to ratchet the amount down. But it's an actuarial number. And if you asked me what was happening in the last 30 years, I would point back to the 80s and 90s of one-year CDs at 11% and 12%. So this has been a very tough year, tough decade, the whole 10 years. It's, if you go back the whole 10 years, we probably wouldn't have made the 7%. So we hear that loud and clear that the, the whole decade has been a terrible rate of return. So the, I just would say that under an actuarial science method, and sorry for getting into the backyard of our consultants, to change a lot each year is not the normal process. If the council were to say that you wanted to see the lower scenarios, we can provide that. It will, all things, all other things being equal, the 2011 levy will go up by every amount that you reduce the assumed rate of return. And not, you know, if that's what it takes to, to get ourselves to 100% funded, it's just a matter of timing.
Absolutely not. I asked.
I, I'm happy to.
Didn't ask, why, why were?
The answer to the second.
Yes.
The answer to the second one is, is that city councils, under the statute, are allowed or provided the ability to prepare their own actuary or use the state's. If you would like to work in a collaborative process where the, both pension boards also have a say in the assumptions, we can do that, but it is your right to have the actuarial report done. They then can certify or not. And we have had, we have a history to that process. But where we're at right now with our assumptions, we are in the mainstream with both our wage assumptions and our investment assumptions. So, you know, to, from that perspective, and we have, if you look at our, just our five-year history, we have serious, we have significantly increased our funding level over the past five years. So yes, we could work with them. No, we don't have to. If so directed, we will.
Thank you. Alderman Shaw-Baptiste?
What I wanted Marty to do, I think he started doing that, is to, when we talk about percentages, the projected return on the investment, and we talk about the fact that these days we're not meeting the 7% projection and the implications to that. When we talk in percentage term, I don't think, you know, the constituents understand the, the monetary implication. And that's why I wanted you to talk about, you know, what does that mean? Like last year, for example, I think the projection was 7.25 or something. And when we came to do the budget, the report on the return was much lower. And therefore taxpayers had to make up the difference. So can you talk about, you know, that kind of experience in the past? How much more did we have to make up? And how do you see us going forward?
Well, I do think our consultants do have that in their report. They have a 30-year graphic that shows what we've got to make up and, and the timeline to do that. So I don't want to get too far out in front of them. But as far as when we don't make our rate of return, two years ago, 2008 October, we lost double-digit percentages. So it could be somewhere between 20 and 35% was our loss. Last year, for our, our both pension funds, our rate of return was double-digit positive. We, we didn't, this last year, it wasn't 2% or 3%. It was, I don't have the numbers in front of me, so I don't want to hazard the guess. But it was double-digit increases. But we were just making up our loss. And my point in bringing that up is, is to not get into the short-term variations of the market. You need to look at your actuarial study, look at what a proper rate of return is, look at what a proper increase in wages is. Those are your two biggest factors and stay with them. And as you continue to not meet in a, a actuarial valuation, your actuals don't meet the projection, then you adjust. But not every year. You will end up trying to market time and it's not good prudent actuarial science on a 30-year defined benefit fund.
So are you saying the reality is that the investment we made returned much higher than we had anticipated, that we had projected?
The last year, yes.
I didn't think that was a report. I didn't think that was a report.
But it was only made, the.
It's because they do smoothing, I think.
No, but the actuals, I'm sorry, I'm speaking to the actuals. Last year from, in our '08, '09 year, so that's two years ago, we showed in our comprehensive annual financial report, very large losses. Not smoothed, not anything. We showed these losses. This previous year, so closing February 28th, 2010, we showed very large gains. And alls it was, was recouping of the losses, just like if you think of what happened to the Dow Jones or any of those indices, they went way down and they're halfway back to where they were. So our funds did the same thing. But you wouldn't want to look at your own actuarial assumptions based on 30% down and 25% back. You would want to pick your, your overall growth. And, and it's in my report and in their report. I'm not mincing words here. We're not catching up the way we'd like to. So the seven and a quarter down to 7% is a move we need to make. The seven down to six and a quarter, if we continue not to make it, is a move we need to make. But we don't know what's going to happen with the state. There could be a, a change in the entire pension legislation, which will impact our funding greatly. So a conservative move of one-quarter percent is what we recommended. You could go to a six and three-quarters percent. And do that, you're probably going to look at a $2.3 million increase over the, that 14.2 million levy. That is still within the ballpark. We would still be in a, you know, our assumptions would be within the mainstream. So I, and again, I, I do want to give them a chance. They are addressing a lot of these in their PowerPoint.
Thank you. We have a few more questions. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Lyons, Ms. Williams and Mr. Weiss?
I think I'm interested in the idea of a collaboration with our police and fire pension boards. We collaborated with stakeholders on the budget process, which I thought was really valuable. And if it makes sense to collaborate with our police and fire pension boards, I think we should do it. As to setting an investment return on those underlying assets, it should be realistic and conservative. And I wonder if there's anything else to suggest, Mr. Lyons, that we be even more conservative in estimating that return? Anything that would, that would, that you would not recommend 6.7% as the basis for our assumptions?
The only reason that I would not recommend it is an ability to pay in the near future and the impact on entire operations for the city. That, and if we, if the point would be that we're going to go to 6.75 and add that to our base tax levy, which was not necessarily a recommendation of the committee when they had their meetings. But if it were to be a zero-sum game, then we would go to 6.75 and we would need to look for a half a million dollars in budget reductions for the year in which that tax levy came forward. And, but from an actuarial basis, I'm not the one you should be looking at. GRS is, as far as any reason they wouldn't propose, because they are our experts. They are, one's a fellow, you know, we hire them for this specific purpose.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I'll go along with Alderman Grover also. I think, I do think we need to do that collaboration. One of my concerns is that, you know, I, I don't want to underestimate. I don't want to overestimate. I, because the burden is very clear. When we start exceeding a $15 million levy for pension funds against the taxpayers, we start creeping over the 50% of the total general fund levy. And that, the total, total tax bill levy. And it's at that point where things start to tip. And I, I just see a dreadful situation occurring. And in order to avoid that, we'll be in a position of raising fees and fines and licenses and other taxes. And I, you know, this isn't, this isn't a narrowly focused issue. This is a very broad issue. And it affects everybody in our community, including the firefighters, the police officers and their families. So I think, I think whatever we can do to collaborate with the firefighters and the policemen, we should do that.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. I'm particularly interested in seeing what the alternative assumptions would come out at. And, and to be, I guess to be blunt, I'm not particularly interested in what the mainstream is. If we look at the mainstream, we look at what everybody else is doing. What everybody else is doing isn't working to me. I mean, you pick up the paper, you read everything that's out there economically. It's not working. The state's not working. None of this is working. So we need to operate in reality and it's time for things to change. And I'd like to be the ones who start changing things. I'm particularly interested in some collaborative effort as well with the police and fire. But until the way that the pensions are done changes, we have to start paying the bills. And I think until we start paying the bills, nobody's going to start operating in reality. So if we start paying the bills, hopefully that's going to let everybody know what this is actually costing. We're just putting it off. We're deferring this into the future and the bill's going to come and we're not going to be able to pay it. And I'm not interested in looking at that. We're paying a bill, but we're not paying enough for the bill. Right?
Alderman Shaw-Baptiste? And then I think it might help if we let the actuaries.
Alderman Wilson, I, I think that there is a, you know, when we make that kind of statement, I mean, a lot of people feed off of that to promote that the city council has been irresponsible in paying those bills. And that's why I'm asking the city, the assistant city manager to talk about, what is the bill? What did we pay last year? And what do we project as the increase? And I'm interested in what that's doing to the percentage of our total budget as Alderman Rainey was indicating. She talked about the tax levy. But I had asked before to graph that, to show that, because it's an enormous amount of money. And what's not working is the kind of system that we have in place that's leading to a greater and greater obligation. And yet we have lower revenue coming in. So ultimately, we will not be able to keep up with that. And that's a concern that I think all of us have.
Right.
I mean, we may want to pay the bill. But if you don't have it to pay the bills, what are you going to do? And so, so that's why I think that, you know, we talk percentages, but we need to talk, you know, those millions of dollars. So the constituents can understand it because ultimately, they're the ones who will have to pay along with every single one of us who live in the city.
Alderman Wilson?
Well, and, and we, we have this obligation to pay it. And until people recognize how serious the shortfall is and the projected deficits are, the problem is nobody's doing anything to change it. And people need to start waking up to the problem and doing something to change it. And to me, that starts here and it starts now.
Alderman Rainey, and then let's go back to the actuarials.
You know, I've got to respond to that. Perhaps you didn't notice the pain, but this year we added an additional $4 million to the pension payment? You know, Alderman Wilson, I don't think you are grasping what we've been doing. And so I think before you continue on this bent, that you take a look at what we've done, okay?
Well, the only thing I'd like to contribute to the discussion is I've been to the state legislature on this issue several times and so far we have gotten absolutely no help. So don't count on them. Sorry, could you go back?
Sure. I just want to make a couple of general comments that we'd be happy to look at the actuarial assumptions. And we think it's important to look at them as a package. So in addition to the investment return assumption, we think it's important to look at the salary increase assumption, mortality assumption and so forth. Let's see. Then the rest of the assumptions that we're using, the mortality table, it's called the group annuity mortality table, 83, Gamma 83. It's a standard mortality table. We're assuming 5% annual increase assumptions for act participants, other demographic assumptions, retirement, disability, termination. And then finally, we use an actuarial cost method, which we saw on that second slide. It's called the entry age normal cost method. And what it does is it recognizes the costs of the benefits as a level percentage of pay over a member's career. And it's designed to stabilize contributions as a level percent of pay. Finally, there was a benefit change since the last valuation as of March 1st, 2009. It affected firefighters who retired before July 1st, 1977. They got an increase and their future benefits will be increased based on this recalculated amount. It resulted in a small increase in the actuarial liabilities, I believe about $100,000. And it added up $7,500 to the contribution amount. Next, we have the actuarial valuation results. We'll start off with the police pension fund. We have side by side.
Sorry, excuse me. Alderman Rainey?
Wait a minute. If, if somebody retired in 1977 and this is 2010, how much longer are they going to be collecting this huge increase? How many are there?
I don't recall. Um, I, I don't recall the exact number. Maybe someone here knows, but I think it was a small.
How many?
Ninety-six. The average age is 81 statewide.
But what about right here? I'm, I'm.
I don't know. I haven't studied it.
Eighty-six.
I, I think there were a few participants.
Yeah, we had four, we had four senior guys. Lost one.
All right. So that, that amounted to an additional $100,000, you said, dollars?
Yeah, in terms of liabilities. So it increased the contribution by $7,500.
Oh, $7,500.
Yeah, the contribution amount. Uh, we have the side by side, uh, pension, police pension fund, uh, valuation results. Um, the valuation as of March 1st, 2009 and March 1st, 2010. And those amounts affect the 2010 levy and then the 2011 levy. So the actuarial liability for the police pension fund, so that's the portion of the present value of the future benefits attributable to service that's already been performed, increased from about 155 million to 166 million. The assets increased, uh, from 66.5 million to about 69 million. And as a result of the assets, uh, increasing by a lower amount than the liabilities, the unfunded liability increased by, it increased from 88.4 million to 97.2 million. Uh, one note is that the assets that we have on here, it's what we use for the actuarial valuation. So it's the actuarial value of assets or the smooth value of assets. So if you look on a market value basis, so, um, the market value of assets, uh, is 65.4 million as of March 1st, 2010. And that's because we're smoothing in the losses that occurred in the last year and we only recognize a portion of the gains from this year. And the asset smoothing method is intended to reduce some volatility in the contribution rates. And it's a common method that's used in public sector pension valuations. Um, next is the funded ratio. So that's the amount of assets covering the underlying liabilities. So if you were up to date, you know, in the, um, payments, then you would have a funded ratio of 100%. So you would have the same amount of assets when looking at the liabilities. Um, in this plan, the funded ratio decreased from 42.9% to 41.5%. That's 60, about 69 million divided by 166 million. And the annual required contribution or the contribution required by the city increased from 7.8 million to 8.8 million. And as a percent of pay, it went from 61.6% to 67.3%. After we go through the fire results, then we'll go over the reasons why, um, those increases This has the same information for the firefighters pension fund. There are similar relationships in this to, as we're seeing with police. The actuarial accrued liability increased from 119.9 million to 129.5 million. The actuarial value of assets or the smooth value of assets increased some from 49.4 million to 52 million on a market value basis. So what you would see in the actual pension trust, um, that amount is 49.8 million. So there's still some losses that need to be recognized that were, um, incurred last year that we're smoothing into the actuarial value of assets. The unfunded liability increased 70 million to 77 million. The funded ratio or the assets covering the liabilities decreased from 41.2% to 40.2%. The annual required contribution increased from 6.4 million to 7.1 million. And as a percent of pay, that went from 68.8% to 78.3%. Um, this slide details the reasons for the increase in the unfunded liability. Uh, the first is what I touched upon on our previous slide, that because we use an actuarial smoothing method for the assets, you only recognize a portion of the loss the first year and then you recognize it over a four-year period. So the three subsequent years, the same thing with gains, anything over the assumption, which is now 7%, would be a quarter would be recognized the first year and then it would be recognized in equal installments over the next three years. So if you look at the second bullet point, even though the rate of return for fiscal year 2010, it was 17.3% for police, 14.9% for fire, which well exceeded the assumption that was 7.25% in the last valuation, um, on an actuarial value of assets basis. So when you looked at the smooth value of assets and how that increased, the implied return was only 1.8% for police and 2.8% for fire. So we'll see, um, the losses being recognized for another two valuations and after, and three more valuations, we'll be recognizing the gains from this, um, 2010 valuation. Finally, the discount rate increased the unfunded liability as well. So as a result of decreasing the assumption from 7.25% to 7% that increased the liabilities by 4.9 million for police and 3.7 million for fire. If this assumption was further reduced, there would be a further increase in the liability and a further decrease in the funded ratio. Next, we'll go into some more details on the contribution rates. Um, the total contribution to be made by, um, the city and the employees, it's defined by statute. So the first component is normal cost. So that's the cost of benefits that we allocate to the current year. Um, and we divide that normal cost into the employee portion and the employer portion. The employee portion's, uh, defined by statute. Uh, it's, uh, 9.91% for police and 9.455% for firefighters. And the rest of the normal cost is picked up by the city. The next is the amortization of the unfunded liability. So because the funded ratio was about 40% instead of 100%, payments need to be made in order to work towards 100% funded ratio. So there's the same amount of assets as liabilities. Uh, the statute defines that it should be amortized or paid off over a 40-year period starting in 1993. So that period is up in 2033. And at that point, it would be 100% funded, staying on the same funding plan. And it's based on a level percent of pay. So the contributions are calculated so that they increase by three and a half percent each year, which is the payroll growth assumption. On this slide, we have the components of the contribution. The top is the normal cost. So that's the cost for the current year of benefits. The net normal cost means this is only in the employer portion. The employee portion has already been subtracted out of here. Um, those amounts have increased from the previous valuation. One reason is because the investment rate of return assumption is lower, which increases the costs. Um, the next portion is the amortization of the unfunded liability. So those are the makeup payments in order to get to 100% funded by 2033. You'll notice that that makes up the bulk of the total contribution. So the contribution for the police fund is 8.8 million. 5.9 million of that is for the makeup payments or the amortization of the unfunded liability. Uh, the next portion is the interest adjustment, and that's to account for the fact that we're calculating numbers as of March 1st, 2010. But, um, there's a lag due to when the amount is levied and collected. So we incorporate that into the contribution calculation. And, uh, as stated on our previous slide, for the police pension fund, the amount increased from 7.8 million to 8.8 million or from 61.6% of pay to 67.3% of pay. The firefighters fund, the relationships are similar in that, um, the total contribution is 7.1 million. Two-thirds of that, or 4.7 million, is for the amortization of the unfunded liability to get to 100% funded. The normal cost is about 2 million and then there's a small interest adjustment of about $500,000, which, um, totals up to 7.1 million, up from 6.4 million from the previous year or as a percent of pay, 68.8% to 78.3%. On this slide, we have some projection results. This one is for the police pension fund. So this is the projected employer contribution and funded ratio between now and 2033. This projection assumes that all of the actuarial assumptions are met. So all of those assumptions that we had on a previous slide, so this assumes 7% investment return every year, uh, 5% salary increases. People retire at the rates that we've projected. Um, they terminate at the rates that we projected. They die at the rates that we have projected. And the contribution, um, increases as a dollar amount by about three and a half percent a year and stays about levels of percent of pay. So it's expected to stay at a level close to 70% until 2033.
This gets to, um, some of the questions that the council members had asked in terms of cost increases in the future. As Amy said, if all the assumptions are met, and that includes a 7% long-term rate of investment return assumption, but if all the assumptions are met, that is, those numbers are the costs of the pension plan. At least for pension, we've got a comparable graph for fire that the city will have to pay. So I know this was a question that had been asked, and I just wanted to point out this, here, the numbers are here.
Uh, and to the extent that the assumptions fall short, the costs will be higher. To the extent that there's gains or the return is higher or people are retiring later, then these costs will be lower. Uh, this slide has the projection results for the firefighters pension fund. Um, the contribution, the employer contribution is, is expected to increase, um, as a level, as a dollar amount by about three and a half percent, which is how pay is assumed to increase. It's about 7.1 million now. It would, uh, be projected to go up to about 12 million in the out years towards 2033. Um, the contribution as a percent of pay is expected to stay around 80%, a little over 80% for that entire time. And again, assuming all the assumptions are met. Um, the last column also has the progress of the funded ratios. So, um, you can see that there is funding improvement, but it takes a while. If you look at 2023, it's 60, it's projected to be 67.9% funded, um, not 80% funded until, you know, a few years after that. And then finally, a hu, about 100% in 2033. This shows the same information that we've showed on the previous slides, but it shows it graphically. So the blue is police, the red is fire. So it shows the total city, uh, commitment over, uh, the period until 2033. So it starts out close to 16 million, uh, is calculated in the 2010 valuation, which affects the 2011 tax levy. Uh, it increases every year as we saw as a dollar amount and about level as a percent of pay. And then finally, in 2033, um, that's when the plans would be 100% funded, assuming the assumptions are realized, the funding plan is, uh, still on track. And then this is a graph of the unfunded liability. So currently, um, it's close to 100 and mil, 180 million unfunded. And as those, um, contributions are made, that unfunded liability is slowly paid off until 2033, when the funded ratio is projected to be 100% and the unfunded liability would be zero. And to the extent there's any shortfalls, the future contributions are recalculated at each valuation to stay on track to this funding plan. And, uh, that, that's the end of our prepared materials if anyone has any questions.
Thank you very much. Um, city manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Uh, we would certainly be happy to work with the pension boards, uh, on this collaboration. I think a point that Marty made, what I would like to amplify, uh, it was important to us that you be the first public body to see this document. So now that you have seen the document, uh, if you would like, uh, to, uh, have us now take it back, work with pension boards, uh, work with them on, I guess, Mr. Lyons, it would be some sort of separate engagement. Maybe you could, could detail, uh, that further, uh, certainly that we would be supportive of doing that. But again, we felt as the, the government body, it was important for you to have this information first. Uh, we certainly have a little bit of time, uh, that, that this work can be done, uh, before any levies need to be set at the end of the calendar year.
Yes, Madam Mayor, uh, Mr. Manager, uh, there's two timetables because this report is used in two documents. One for the levy, it's used there, and also for our comprehensive annual financial report. So our deadline for the comprehensive annual financial report is quickly approaching. We need to have that done by August 31st each year. So, um, what we can do is to, uh, at some point, we need to put a number in for our audit, the level of funding that we are going to commit. To the extent that we go through negotiations, I haven't heard anyone tonight talk about relaxing assumptions and ending up with a number in the future that might be less. So for instance, a seven and a half percent interest rate that would create a lower levy. No one's been talking about that. My point for bringing it up is, is that I need to get something in our annual financial report. We need to properly disclose our liability. To the extent that we wish to change assumptions at a future date, we can certainly do that for the levy. It just won't be reflected in our annual audit. I will need to do that. Uh, Mr. Drazner, uh, deadline, do you think that, uh, we can work on this?
I would like to have some firm number within the next few moments.
So that gives us a month to try and get something into the audit. We can keep the council posted on that. I just wanted you to be aware of the, the dual use of the fund and we'll be happy to meet immediately with representatives of both boards.
And, and Madam Mayor, members of the council, I would think then we could come back at the, at your, uh, second meeting in July. That would be what, July the, the 26th, uh, after having consulted with the boards. And if there's any additional information the boards wish to share at that time for your consideration, then we can, uh, deal with that at that point. And Mr. Lyons, could you also talk a little bit about the, the engagement, uh, that we would, uh, work with the two boards on for the review?
Um, depending on the level of actuarial assumption changes, uh, that impacts the additional, uh, man-hours, uh, that, um, GRS will need to put into the situation, uh, for recalculating a report. The other, um, issue that, um, Mr. Schoolmaster brought up, and rightly so, was the potential to have someone else look at this as a per what the Blue Ribbon Committee, uh, recommended. That could be this year or a commitment in, um, from the council this year to do it next year. We didn't have that commitment anywhere that we would do it. So I think we would like to come back after a short meeting with a, uh, communication to the council as to whether we're going to use GRS or whether it is the, uh, pension board's preference to get data immediately to a, this is our third-party actuary, a fourth-party actuary, um, because we, uh, just to make sure everyone understands, we're already more conservative than the state's actuary. Our evaluation tonight is, um, and so we have that number, we have this number, and then we'd be looking at a third set of numbers.
But, but Mr. Lyons, that we could communicate with the council off agenda, but then come back with a full report on the 26th of July on those discussions as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Lyons, I have one question. Isn't one of our assumptions has been that its salary increases would be at 5%? And hasn't one of our problems been that our salary increases have been over 5%?
That is, uh, a correct statement. One of the things that is misleading about that salary, um, statement is, is that it is for all salaries within the fund. And when you have a fund where you have a tendency to promote from within and you also have steps, then it's not just the 3% cost of living increase that's impacting. It's what happens when someone has changed from firefighter to captain, captain to, um, deputy chief and up to chief. Those increases raise the annual actual salary costs and that's usually what, um, causes an assumption not to be met when you have a high level of internal promotion. You wouldn't think that could ever be a downside, but that is one of the issues when that does happen. So, um, that is also, uh, a, an assumption to be looked at.
Thank you. All right. So city manager, you were suggesting that we not, uh...
We'd ask, Madam. That you not take action this evening and instead refer this back to staff. Um, we will work with the two boards, uh, keep you posted on, uh, those discussions and then come back to you on the 26th of July with an update and likely ask that you take action so that we have the number, uh, that Mr. Lyons referred to for our, uh, comprehensive annual financial report.
Is that all right with everyone?
Yes.
All right. Moving right along, first quarter financial report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, keeping with the, uh, theme of this evening, uh, to kind of give you a sense of where we are financially, uh, we do have our, our first quarter budget review. As you all know, it's, uh, difficult to always get a, a good sense of where you stand after the first three months, but we wanted to, to make sure, we've committed, uh, not only to give you monthly financials, but to give you on a quarterly basis, a comprehensive review of where we're at. of where we're at. Joelle and Earl, our director of administrative services is here this evening with a report for staff.
Briefly, I'm going to speak more to you this evening with regard to the CIP, and the finance division manager, Stephen Drazner, is going to present the PowerPoint for the first quarter update.
Mayor Tisdale and members of the city council, I'm going to present the first quarter financials for March, April, and May of 2010, the first quarter. Our general fund revenues were at approximately 24.4 million dollars, or twenty-eight percent of budget. This is approximately three percent favorable to the twenty-five percent that we would normally expect for the end of the first quarter. And this is primarily due to receiving the first installment, the first property tax installment, for March, April, and May of the fiscal year, and the second installment should be received September through November, so that would most likely hit the third and fourth quarter of the year. Our general fund expenditures totaled about eighteen point six million, or twenty-one point five percent of budget. This is slightly under the expected target of twenty-five percent, but this is primarily due to a few different factors. The number one would be the number of payrolls that we had in the first quarter. We're on a bimonthly basis for our payroll, so we received twenty-six per year, in the first quarter, we only received six. So if you were to do an even proration of payroll, that would come to six and a half per quarter. So each payroll is, and I'm going to touch on this in another slide, but each payroll would be approximately two and a half million, so a half would be about 1.2 million dollars. Our unreserved fund balance for the first quarter ended at approximately 19.1 million dollars. In this amount, we had about 1.9 million dollars from the sale of a city property, and that's reflected in this 19.1 million dollars. So without that sale of the Sher Valley property, we would be closer to about 17 million dollars, seventeen point two million dollars. Our unreserved fund balance compared to the same time last year is approximately 700,000 dollars more than what we had, so that's eighteen point four million dollars versus the nineteen point one million. The first installment property tax is calculated at fifty-five percent of the prior year tax amount, and the prior year levy was 16.6 million dollars. So through 5/31, we received about 8.9 million dollars of this, although 1.5 million of this was actually credited to our prior fiscal year. Our real estate transfer tax is doing nicely so far for the year, we received a little over a half a million dollars, and if the sales trend continues for the rest of the year, we could expect to exceed our budget by about 400 to 500 dollars for the entire year. Our income tax, we normally receive a monthly distribution from the state of Illinois, which is a per capita distribution. The state is currently delayed in sending us our payments, although they do notify us how much we are entitled to, we just haven't received the actual payments yet. And for the sales tax, it's similar, there's normally a two- to three-month delay between the liability month, in other words, when we're entitled to receive the tax versus when we actually collect the tax. So we do have an estimate in there for the sales tax and the income tax. Okay, licenses are below budget.
Alderman Rainey?
So, did you put your light on, Ed? So far, we are doing okay, at least with what the state is telling us, with the state and the sales and income tax.
Yes, yes, we should, we should meet the budgeted target for both those taxes at this point, although I don't really have that much data to look at and to project, but based on what I've seen, we should meet budget.
But those are important categories in our revenue, so, I mean, if we are tracking, that's a good thing.
Mr. Drazner, how much does the state of Illinois currently owe the city of Evanston and Arres?
It comes to about four to 500,000 dollars per month, so I would say about one and a half million dollars at this point.
Okay, thank you.
License revenue is below budget, but this is really due to the seasonal nature of this revenue. Our vehicle licenses are usually not collected until November, December of each fiscal year. Based on the first quarter results, the building and permits appear to be slightly below target, at least right now, but based on my conversations with community development, we do expect some large payments in this area, and I don't expect to come under budget for the full year, so I wouldn't be overly concerned about permits. And now the revenues so far appear to be on target.
Excuse me, Steve, Alderman, John Baptiste.
Where are the payments coming from?
The specific payments, I don't have that information. Is Mr. Walker in the audience, or?
And Alderman, John Baptiste says hopefully Mr. Walker's in the next room will come in. I know that there's at least one large project, a couple of projects at Northwestern, I think there are continuing payments for the Georgian. We can, we'll go ahead and get Mr. Walker, and we'll make sure we'll get an answer to your question before the evening is over.
And so far, other revenues appear to be on target with budget, and the end of the second quarter, we'll have a much better idea of where we expect to end up for the fiscal year. Okay, and the next slide, this is a summary by revenue category of everything in our general fund, and I'm not going to read through the entire list, but you can see that a large portion of our revenue is the property tax filed by charges for services and sales tax. Okay, going over to the expenditure side, our total expenditures for the first quarter ended at approximately 18.6 million dollars for the general fund. This is slightly below 25% target, which would be 21.6 million dollars, so that's about a 3 million dollar difference, but there are some good reasons why our expenditures are 3 million dollars less than the 25% target, and that's going to be discussed on the next slide. Okay, most of you are aware that in the general fund, and as well as our other funds, that our expenses are not evenly incurred throughout the fiscal year, and some of the main reasons why we're doing so well in the first quarter is due to the seasonable employee wages in recreation, and those wages would total about 1.2 million dollars, and that's going to be, that's going to hit our budget in the second quarter, those are during the summer months. We do have some overtime in public works for snow and ice removal, which won't hit until probably the third and fourth quarter of the year. And again, going back to the payroll allocation, if we were to evenly allocate the payroll by quarter, that would be about another 1.2 million dollars that would hit the first quarter of the fiscal year. So when you factor all those items together, we probably are right around that 25% mark. Okay, and again, this slide summarizes by...
Excuse me, Alderman Rainey has a question.
I hate to do this, but given the fact, and I wouldn't expect you to do this in advance of our approving a change in the fiscal year, but aren't all of these projections going to have to be changed to meet a less than 12-month fiscal year for this year?
Well, when we, if we do go to a fiscal year, what will happen is, we'll have a short fiscal year of 10 months, and then we will have to...
We're going to use, we're going to go 12 months for this year?
Yes, we're going to finish...
Alderman Rainey, members of the council, we're proposing that next year would be a 10-month budget.
So you're not proposing that we pass a budget before, you are proposing that we pass a budget if we approve the new fiscal year in December?
I'm asking, it's later on the agenda, but asking that you would adopt the new schedule so that you could take advantage of the property tax levy setting in December, yet, so there would be, necessarily be two months where you'd have two budgets, the current year and then next year.
Okay, this slide summarizes by function, the various expenditures in the general fund. Okay, in terms of our fund balance, our unaudited fund balance, as the end of the last year, 2/28/10, was 11.4 million dollars. When you factor in the various activity for the first quarter of the fiscal year, we're coming to 19.1 million dollars, and again, most of the reason for this is the first installment of property tax. So this, well, this should actually go down for the second quarter, okay? And this is about 752,000 dollars more than the same time last year. Okay, this slide summarizes all our funds by revenue and expense, and it also provides you the unreserved fund balance and the cash balance. And there are a couple of funds where there is a large difference between the two, between the unreserved fund balance and the cash balance, and I'm going to briefly describe some of those differences. First quarter financial results for the capital and other non-operating funds is not always an accurate indication to project annual performance. And again, a lot of this is due to just an uneven collection of revenue and an uneven dispersment of the various expenditures throughout the year. And a good example of this would be paying for debt service, which normally occurs two times during the year for principal and interest, and also large capital expenditures. Okay, the major differences between the fund balance, the unreserved fund balance and the cash balance, as you can see between the CDBG funds and the insurance fund, would primarily be such items as accounts receivable, property taxes receivable, that would be the case of the CDBG funds, various loans that have made in our receivables. And for the insurance fund, it's the opposite. What we do for that fund is, we actually have to book claims outstanding, what we expect to pay for future claims. So what happens when we do that is, we take that portion out of our fund balance, and we transfer it to a liability account. It's just an accounting entry. So those are some of the differences between the two metrics.
Alderman Rainey?
So, in the insurance fund, it shows a deficit of 4.9 million dollars, but that's really a reserve for future claims?
That's a good way of looking at it. It is, we're setting aside a certain number of dollars for future payouts.
Okay.
And for decision-making purposes, I always recommend that you concentrate a little bit more on our cash balances versus a fund balance, because cash is more near-term and fund balance is more long-term. So for immediate needs, I would look more at the cash balances for each fund. And that concludes my presentation, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Madam Mayor, I believe the assistant city manager has a few comments.
Just one follow-up, while I was out of the room, I apologize, there was a question about building permit revenue on large buildings.
Yes, coming.
And the, well, I did speak with Dennis Marino regarding those two major buildings, and one's escaping me, but the Mather II is expected, the permit is expected to be issued this fiscal year, and another Northwestern project is also expected to be issued this year. The total of the two will be in excess of a million dollars in permit revenues, so where we're at right now, at about 20% through the first quarter, does not include any of those major revenues. Including those in, we could jump up to 1.5, 1.7 million dollars for the year. That just goes to point out the unpredictable nature of the larger permit revenues, and it does make it difficult to budget from year to year. And I'm sure Mr. Walker or Mr. Marino would be happy to do a follow-up, a short email on the specifics of those two developments.
And we'll handle that in the Friday packet.
Thank you. I see no lights and no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Drazner. Next is the capital improvement program budget.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, you had asked us to come back to do a little bit of scrubbing on the CIP. What you have before you is the results of that effort. If I could just take a moment before Mrs. Earl comes to the podium and provides the quick PowerPoint, let me try to have you focus on the resolution itself, we're asking that the council consider this evening approval of Resolution 40R-10 that would make an adjustment in the dollar amount that the council previously approved for the capital budget. We have, I think, done a good job of scrubbing the issues that you asked us to look at, and I think primarily you can see the results, the summary results of that on page 122 of your packet, where you see some adjustments, some of which are general, excuse me, some of which are general capital expenditures, others of which are water and sewer expenditures. We feel at the end of this exercise that this is a number that more closely tracks to the council's desires in this area. We think that this is a number that's supportable, that these are projects that we can move forward with. I know that Joelle and we'll talk a little bit more broadly about this. We also appreciate the feedback of the council on the detailed information that you were looking for in the capital budget, and if you look at page 127 of your packet, we've attempted to respond to the council's request for a better summary document, a summary spreadsheet of projects, and that begins on 127. And then the document that was attached to the council agenda packet, again, is a more complete review of each of the specific capital projects. So we're hopeful that we have met those concerns. In a few moments after this report, we will talk a little bit about a budget calendar for next year, and it's my hope that the council can spend some time at the very front end of the process, talking about the capital budget next year, so that we'll all be folded in with the operating, and you will have better input on the projects that are important to you. I see there's a question.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Well, I just wanted to say, Madam Mayor, to Wally and the staff, that this is exactly the sheet I was looking for, exactly. I mean, everything you would ever want to know.
Great, well, and Mrs. Earl, and especially Mrs. Earl and her staff, really deserve kudos, because they, we looked at models from other communities, nothing was really quite what you wanted, and so we came up based on your comments, so I want to thank Joelle and her staff for doing that. And if the council is all in agreement, then this will be the template that we'll use going forward. Again, one of your goals was to kind of straighten through this process, and we appreciate your patience with us, but if we're close at this point, we'll continue to use it as we move forward. Joelle, and I probably have stolen much of your thunder, but with that, please go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, manager Bob Kowitz, clerk Green. Yes, you did speak a lot to what I was going to talk about tonight, but there were a couple other things that you had asked about as a result of the meeting in May, and I wanted to highlight those for you and answer any questions that you may have. So I guess I'll go in reverse order, because Alderman Rainey already spoke to the project list. One of the big pieces, I think, that was missing at your meeting in May was the status of the project. So what we attempted to do was to give that to you in a column, and we talked about whether or not the design had been completed, if it was in design, if it was completed, or if it was a fully completed project, to give the dates. And I believe Alderman Wilson had talked about the fact that he knew that some of the projects had been completed and wanted that information. So this list provides for you the actual point at which the projects are. In addition to that, there were some changes to the CIP that you had requested. Some of them have to do with water and taking advantage of some interest rates and trying to bring some projects forward, and there will be more to come on that at a later date. In addition to that, you had asked that James Park be removed as a project, you had asked that the 1817 roof be removed as a project, and it was also requested that a crosswalk be included. In the bottom line, the crosswalk does not impact that number, because it is included in traffic operations maintenance, which is a line item in the CIP. But the adjustments have been made in the CIP resolution on page six of your packet. All of the specific numbers associated with those changes have been included for your review.
Page number, Joan?
Six.
We're in the 120s, for the full packet.
This is in six of the 78 page.
Oh, six of the second.
Yes, this is, I'm speaking from the addendum, we gave you, the CIP resolution is in your packet, but then we did a separate addendum as a result of the questions you asked. as a result of the questions you asked at the meeting in May. I also wanted to highlight for you the grant cash match requirements and the nature of some of the grants. You had asked about that as well. We obviously have community development block grants that fund several of the projects or a portion of several of the projects. The COPS technology program funded actually at a hundred percent, the camera project, and that was obtained as a result of the assistance of Congresswoman Jan Sikowski. The CMAP money has been explained with regard to the traffic signal upgrades on Sheridan and Chicago. We also have the Lake Street project, and we received a, the city share, exec, I'm sorry, with regard to that project is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The emergency repair program, which relates to two road projects on Isabella and Emerson, we're receiving ninety-five percent of that funding, and actually, we probably will have that project funded at one hundred percent, just because of the fact that we're doing the design work. The lakefront master plan implementation, the grant money associated with that project will yet to be determined. In speaking with the folks in community recreation, we talked about the fact that the amount reimbursable under that grant will depend on the project that is completed, and then the state will determine for what we will be reimbursed. And lastly, I believe Alderman Burris, you had asked about the animal shelter renovation. The money that's in the CIP for this year will help the design portion go forward. The city has taken three hundred and fifty thousand of the cash match, which is fifty percent, and have put that into next year's CIP. And then lastly, you had talked, or you had asked, I'm sorry, initially, about debt limits in other communities. And that is on page five of the packet. And we surveyed thirty-five communities to determine, really, where we were with regard to how much we were incurring for debt. And other than Evanston, there's only four communities that we surveyed that actually had debt policies. So what I attempted to do with the assistance of Stephen Drazner and Marty Lyons was to kind of highlight for you what's happening in other communities with regard to debt. And if you look at the percentages, you know, ours seem rather high. You know, it's over nine percent, but really what you need to look at is the amount.
Ms. Earl, and Alderman Rainey has a question.
Well, I can finish your thought.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Please, I think, you're on page five of the addendum at this point.
Yes, I am. I'm looking at that spreadsheet, and then in my cover memo, I, there's some points in there with regard to the debt. There's two columns on that spreadsheet that relate to the city's debt. The first is the general obligation debt, and then there's other debt. The other debt is the IEPA loans, which is completely paid from ratepayers. The general obligation debt is broken into two pots. One is the abated debt and one is the unabated debt. So the piece with regard to the unabated debt is one hundred and one million of the one hundred and seventy-four million, and that's what the taxpayers have to pay for. The abated debt will be recovered through other means at some point. Even though we have to levy it through general obligation bonds, we expect to be reimbursed for those project costs at a later date. So we did some simple math with regard to the unabated debt and how it relates to our current policy, which says you should not be issuing more than ninety million dollars in debt. The amount that's, that we currently have is a hundred and one million, which is eleven million dollars higher than what the policy recommends. And we thought back five years ago and decided to compare how much debt the ninety million was to the total amount versus what it is today, and it was about five percent. And what we have right now is a little over three percent. So even though we are exceeding what the policy says, which you can do, and I also indicated in the note, when we talk later on with regard to budget policy, we will come back with a recommendation on possibly moving to a percentage versus a fixed dollar amount. You're still actually better than where you were with regard to the debt, to the equalized assessed valuation five years ago. So we wanted to make that point, just so you could have a benchmark or something for comparison purposes. And again, as I indicated, most communities don't have a debt policy, at least from the ones we surveyed. There were only four, and in the comments section of that spreadsheet that we provided, we indicated which ones had it and what their policy was.
Alderman Burris?
Go ahead.
Sorry, Alderman Rainey.
Just a very quick question. In our case, we're home rule, so I think it's very important that we have a policy as to how much money we can spend on major projects. In some of these communities, I'm sure, are non-home rule communities, and if they want to levy, City Manager, could you help me out with this? If they want, in a non-home rule community, if they want to spend an extraordinary amount of money on a capital project, don't they have to go to the voters in non-home rule communities?
Yes, they do, and Mr. Lyons can give you more detail.
Oh, I don't, I.
Well, they do have a cap, though. They do have a cap, so they can't go, even if they have an eight percent, it's a little bit higher than eight percent cap for non-home rule. But to go above their current outstanding indebtedness and incur a higher levy, they have to go to the voters.
So that sort of takes care of a policy about a debt limit. So that's where we're a little different, and I think it's very important for us to have a policy regarding our indebtedness.
And we agree.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
You just went through and did a lot of why we're different, abated, unabated. Really, I'm not sure that I got a lot out of that. I know the difference between abated and unabated, but how do we compare? These other communities have similar things. We only have one community that has a bigger debt ratio, and that's Cicero. I'm not sure they really want to be compared to Cicero in general. But there has to be other communities who are doing the same thing. So I'd like, if possible, for you to go through again, and maybe more in English, nothing personal against you, it's just the whole notion of, we're going to do this, and we're going to switch this here, and this really doesn't, it doesn't matter that we have nine point, almost nine point five percent in debt ratio. Can we go back through and actually really walk through what you're talking about and why are we so different, and it's okay that we're that high? Does that make sense? I just want you to walk through again why, why we're so different and special, and it's okay for us to be at nine, and these other communities aren't.
Okay. Well, as I indicated, we split out the debt, so the portion that.
Does anybody else do that?
I, we don't have, I don't have in front of me the numbers here with regard to, of that GO debt, how much of it is abated or unabated. One of the unique things about Evanston, which would assume that we would have more debt, is the nature of our infrastructure. We have a water facility, and we have to issue general obligation debt and then get that back through the ratepayers.
Okay. What other, Will Met has one. Who else on this list? I, I'm just saying, I, I just get a little frustrated when, well, we're special, we're different, well, we shouldn't be in the same category and playing by the same rules, but we're in a lot of debt here. And so I think that we need to figure out, even though we have maybe special infrastructure, a lot of these communities are older communities as well, with some of the similar issues, and they're not at nine point five percent.
Right.
Okay, so.
Another, another difference is we have the TIF districts, which is not appearing in a lot of these communities as well, which, again, would assume that we would be issuing more debt. I'm not saying that some of them don't have them, but I'm saying that a lot of them do not. So the best measure I can give you as far as a benchmark is concerned, before we come back and make a recommendation on what the policy should be, because we do need to look at that, is how we compare to the debt we had issued five years ago and what the policy was. And what I'm saying, if we compare to ourselves from five years ago, we actually have less debt ratio to the equalized assessed valuation than we did five years ago.
And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Burris, let me take another crack at this, because I, as I think.
Okay. So I'm not sure that that's helpful, that we were in debt then and we're in debt now.
I think one of the challenges we face is that these communities deal with debt differently, they disclose some of their debt differently. What I'd like to do, Alderman Burris, with the council's concurrence, is let us work on this table to give you some different numbers. I mean, not different numbers, but the same numbers in different categories, because I think it's important to see the various types of debt. If you were to take just the general obligation debt that we have, so if you look at that third column, the general obligation debt, and you look at what we're listing as the other debt, and if you were to simply subtract away that hundred and four million, we're still, we're still in the high range of communities. So if you're, if we're saying we're special, and we've got the water infrastructure, and there are explanations for that, but let's just take that off the table and just look at our, our general obligation debt, we're still, we're not the highest in this sample group, but we're in the top third. And so perhaps what would be useful is perhaps we take the ten most comparable cities in this list, and we can go back and spend more time up with their comprehensive financial reports and pick apart their debts, so we can compare apples to apples and give you a better sense of the larger communities on this list in northern Illinois, which we might compare ourselves to, so you can get a better sense. We're not saying that our debt-to-EAV ratio is good, and I hope you haven't heard that, because we're not. I think we're trying to give you meaningful information to make future budget decisions. And I think, from hearing the discussion this evening, if we were to take the time to pick out ten of these communities, go back to their comprehensive annual financial report, and compare the debt apples to apples, that at least can give you some order of magnitude understanding to show where, you know, there may be a blip. Because again, maybe all those communities, if we go through and disclose what portions of their GO debt may be for infrastructure that we didn't otherwise see, and compare that apples to apples, then you might have a better sense of things. But clearly, one of the concerns I've had, and I think one of the concerns the council's had, is making capital budgeting one of your council goals, is the enormous amount of debt that we have incurred without understanding the ramifications. And I think that a different table, and as we look at budget calendars, we're proposing to start the budget process here, you know, in ninety days, that we would come back to you with that prior to the beginning of the budget process and have an additional discussion. But it would be helpful to us if we don't do all of these cities, of course, but if we did the ten most comparable, I think that's a good use of staff time to compare that debt apples to apples.
Alderman Rainey?
Joelle, and you said that one of the reasons we have large debt is because of TIF districts. We have a large number of TIF districts. I would take exception to that statement, because that is an abated debt. TIF, so I, is this, does the GO debt include, what does it include? I mean, that's what I would want to know. What, what are we looking at here?
The GO debt does include debt that we would have to carry, that we would be reimbursed for through the TIF district. So that's why I was saying, the hundred and one million of the one hundred and seventy-four is unabated, and that's where the taxpayers come into having to pay that back. The remaining seventy-three million would be reimbursed through other sources, such as the TIF districts, the water sewer, and parking funds. So we have to borrow the total amount, some of which is abated through those funds. So.
So you're saying the hundred and four thousand is, a hundred and four million is abated?
Hundred and, hundred and one, yes. The hundred, the hundred and four is the IEPA, which is completely abated through sewer ratepayers. That, that money is generally there for sewer, and that is paid through the rates, which is completely abated.
Well, yeah, but the, the TIF indebtedness is completely paid by the increment that does not go in to the general fund.
You're, you're correct, but we still have to borrow first, and then we get reimbursed, so that.
How do you think we got the hundred and four million? We borrowed it from the IEPA. I see no difference, absolutely no difference.
Well, maybe it's the way we're breaking it out, and as the city manager said, we can look at, showing this to you different ways. For purposes of comparison, initially, we put all the GO in one column, which, some of which is abated, some of which is unabated, and then the separate one hundred and four million, which is IEPA. So as the city manager said, maybe we can look at this a few different ways to make some more meaningful comparisons for you for the future.
I think it would be more meaningful if we took, like he said, ten comparable communities, but communities that we're familiar with. Like, I have no idea what they do in Romeo Ville, and that's one on here, and some of the others. So if we could do ones that were more familiar, that are more comparable.
And Alderman Rainey.
And Romeo Ville might be comparable, I just.
My sense is that Romeo Ville is not comparable. So we will, we'll look for communities that are of like size. Certainly, we look at Arlington Heights, Schaumburg, Skokie, communities you're familiar with of comparable size. We'll add a few more to that. We'll break it down. Bottom line is, we have too much debt, and we need to do what, regardless of who pays it back, we have too much debt, and we certainly want to help the council understand that. So as you make difficult decisions to increase that debt amount, that you have a full understanding of where you stand currently, and certainly we want you to understand where we stand compared to other comparable cities in northern Illinois.
And I think, I think an additional problem is, we have other issues that we need to spend money on that aren't even listed in these totals.
And, and I think that, it's an incremental process, Alderman Rainey, and I think that we want to provide the tools for the council and continue these discussions, because they're very important discussions for the needs of the community.
Thank you. I see no lights for questions.
Madam Mayor, if there are no further questions, we'd ask the council to go back to the staff report on page one twenty-four of your packet, excuse me.
Well, there is now a question. Alderman Grover.
Okay.
So keep searching.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mrs. Earl, my, my only question is, in looking at our capital improvement plan, that is really great. I'm wondering, there are some columns missing. What information did we not include in this? I'm just reading through the columns, A, B, C, D, there's a missing E, so some information's been pulled, because it doesn't fit for space purposes. What other kinds of things did you?
Well, I don't know if you can see how small this is, but this is half of the rest of the columns.
You can see it's small.
It's very small. What we had asked the directors to do, and I have to give them a lot of credit for trying to, helping us get this together, in order to do the phasing, we had asked for dates, we had asked for amounts, and that's really what is in the columns that you're not seeing. We just hid those columns, and we tried to summarize as much as possible for purposes of illustration.
And it being a technical.
But if you e-mailed them, we could see them.
I would be, it's eleven by seventeen. I mean, there's a lot of detail in here with, and I'm happy to share it with you, but for purposes of illustration, we hid a lot of those columns.
And Madam Mayor, Alderman Rainey and Grover, what we'll do is, we'll print it on eleven seventeen. It's not something that's computer-friendly because of its size, but we'll print it out on hard copy and make it available to you.
Thank you.
We were just trying to package it in a way, since you're all looking at computer screens, that it would be as easy as possible to look at.
Thank you. I like the packaging, and I'd be interested in more information even.
Sure.
Great, thank you, Ms. Earl.
Thank you. All right, City Manager, this is for action.
Yes, we would ask you to adopt Resolution forty dash R dash ten.
Would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution forty R ten, capital improvement program budget. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Grover.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman John Baptiste has a question.
I know that throughout the year, from time to time, when these projects came up, although we had approved them previously, we really want to get, be notified as to what we're doing, so that a project that we approve in June that comes up in November, you know, we need some background information updated, okay? I just want to make sure.
And Madam Mayor, Alderman John Baptiste, there is a portion which we are now going to add to the quarterly budget report, which will give a comprehensive review of where we're at with the capital projects. We decided, since we were giving you so much information this evening, to not have that summary document, but we've already prepared a summary document, and it will now be provided with you quarterly. We think we have systems in place now to avoid some of the challenges we faced the last twelve months.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Madam Mayor.
It's perfectly all right. City Clerk, I think we are now ready to call the roll.
Alderman Grover.
Still yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman John Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the capital improvement budget passes. Next, City Manager is Ordinance forty-eight oh ten, amending the city code to make the
on several previous occasions. It's my recommendation to the City Council that we transition from a fiscal year that begins on March 1st and ends on February 28th, to a fiscal year that begins on January 1st and ends on December 31st. It's been, I've heard various stories as to how the city got to a fiscal year that was a March 1 fiscal year. My understanding is, it was previously a January fiscal year. I think it makes sense for the council to make the change primarily for your ability to set tax rates in the month of December. Previously, when the council with the budget has decided to make adjustments to the tax rate in February, you were waiting an additional 10 months before that tax rate would have an impact on the budget. So that is the primary reason to do that. With some previous discussion that the council had with last, the current year budget preparation, there was an interest in making sure that this was done deliberately and not done too quickly. And so what I'm proposing that we would do is to have a 10-month budget for the fiscal year in 2011, from March 1 to December 31, and then have the first full 12-month fiscal year in 2012. As you recall, your discussion, there was some concern when this was first raised to not do it in the current year that we were in, because of all the changes that were going on. And I took those comments very much to heart, and so this is an elongated way to do this, but I think transparency is so important to the City Council, I don't want anyone to think that there's something being done here more than to try to just to make the budget easier. So if it's going to take to 2012 to get there, I think it's prudent to do this in a deliberative manner. Hence the reason we're proposing then, the ordinance change for a 10-month fiscal year in 2011, and then converting to the January 1 fiscal year in 2012.
Alderman Rainey.
Well, I'm very much in support of that, and also in the process. But what I want to understand is, how, how does the tax bill look in the year that we have the 12-month year, with the school levy and the other levies that are on different fiscal years?
The tax bill itself will not look any different. We will, in effect, collect 12 months of, of levy. Since it's an annual levy, we'll collect it in 10, in 10 months' period.
No, but I mean, I mean in two years, when we go to the full 12-month new, January to December 31st, and this, and somebody else is on a March.
Well, let's, for us, the, the tax bill that I receive at 2100 Ridge Avenue is going to still say the identical thing that it says now. So when we issue our levy each year in December, it goes on to tax bills the following year. And it doesn't matter whether you have a July 1 fiscal year, as the schools do, or a January 1 fiscal year, as we propose to do, that tax bill will stay the same. So right now, schools have a thing called early taxes. It's in their financial report, so they receive a lot of taxes in before June 30th, and they don't want to count them, because it makes their fund balances look large. It's for expenditures the next year. The tax bill won't change. That's all I can do.
The proportion amounts will be the same.
They will be the same. So for, for us, we'll levy in December and start collecting two months later for that bu, the budget and the levy will match. And right now, they're off by a year.
I believe you completely. I know you know exactly what you're talking about, but I, I just feel confused.
Can we provide a few samples?
I'm, I'm glad to hear you say that.
All right, we'll provide a few samples using tax bills.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Mr. City Manager, what do you see as the implications of this change on the deliberation process? Because we usually start, what, last week in January, go through February. What does it mean?
Alderman Jean Baptiste, members of the council-
November, December.
Yes, and the next item before you is a calendar for budget deliberation. So we're proposing that we would start in September with the council goal-setting, with community workshops. The budget would be to you on October the 8th, and then there would be deliberations through October and November, hoping that you are, are completed before Thanksgiving. Then you would set the levy rate, is it by December 15th or December 8th?
We usually approve the levy in the first council meeting in December. You must do it by the last Tuesday in December, according to county. So we would have the budget and the levy in lockstep on the approval, or right there. I know the calendar might say something different at this point.
So it would go from a January, February process to an October, November process. And we are proposing that we would start that this year. So even though it would be the 10-month process, we would like to take advantage of the, of the benefits of this with the preparation of the 10-month budget. So then you would have two months of next year with the current year budget, month 11 and 12, as well as already having had the adopted budget, which we would then sort of put on the shelf for two months, and then pull out on March 1.
Alderman Grover. I think that was my question, is you would intend the next year's budget calendar, this year's, for fiscal year 2011 to be a transitional year, so we work into this budget calendar?
And I would ask, and I'm proposing to the council-
Before we actually adopt the-
And I would, I'm proposing to the council that you would adopt the new budget calendar for the next, for the coming fiscal year.
As kind of a transitional year before we then have adopted the, the calendar fiscal year.
That's correct. So that you would, in essence, be adopting a budget two months before the beginning of that new fiscal year.
See, no more lights. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I still move.
For introduction only.
All right. All in, then all in favor, aye?
Aye.
It is introduced.
And, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the next item is the proposed budget calendar for the preparation of the fiscal year 2011 budget, which is, the calendar appears on page 135 of your agenda packet. We are proposing that we would start this in September. Monday, September the 13th, as part of your regular budget meeting, have council goal-setting, review where you are with your 2010 goals, and make any adjustments that would need to be done there. Then have a citizen budget workshop. There were five budget workshops, if you recall, last year. I'm proposing that we go down to two. I think that there are a lot of work was done in the community, that there's likely not a reason to, to involve, ask people to devote five days, five evenings, afternoons of their life to that. So we're proposing that that would be, the first one of those would be on September the 18th. Then at your Monday, September 20th meeting, we would ask you to have a special meeting on that date for a mid-year budget review, and also to talk about your CIP priorities for the coming year. Have a second citizen budget input session on the 29th of September. We would give you the proposed budget on Friday, October the 8th. Two Saturday budget discussions on October 23rd and November 6th. Begin the public hearings on the budget on Monday, November 8th, continuing, if needed, through Monday, November the 22nd. And then, as Mr. Lyons indicated, the tax levy adoption on Monday, December the 13th.
Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the calendar for this coming fiscal year 2011.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Tendem?
Looking at a Jewish calendar for the upcoming high holidays, it appears Yom Kippur is celebrated this September 18th, 2010. I'm not sure if that's-
Is that sundown?
Sundown that night would make it appropriate to do this?
No. Thank you. I don't think it would be appropriate to do it on Yom Kippur.
Okay, so we-
But if Yom Kippur starts that evening-
It starts at sundown, doesn't it?
Correct.
We'll be out by noon.
Would leave it at the council's discretion. My, my, in working in other communities, as long as you did not have a night meeting, that was usually the, the rule of thumb, because it begins at sundown. So as we did last year, we would propose that this would be a 12 o'clock conclusion, but would leave it to the council's discretion.
I think that would be fine. Alderman Tendem, you're the expert.
Um.
Pressure's on.
And we could come back, Madam Mayor, members of the council, if we, after further consultation, discover this is an inappropriate date for the observance of the holiday, we'd come back with another date.
Right. I'll, I can look into it, and we'll revise if necessary.
Okay.
An alternative, Madam Mayor, could be a weeknight. I mean, if-
Why don't we do what Alderman Tendem suggests? We could pass this, and if there's a problem, we'll change.
We can amend it.
Amend that one. All right, it has been moved and seconded, seeing no further lights. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The proposed budget calendar passes.
And, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the final item before you is a proposed rules of parliamentary procedure regarding budget consideration and adoption. If you recall, through the budget workshops that we had this year, there was a little bit of sometimes lack of clarity as to the status of the meetings that we were having. I've asked the city attorney to draft some proposed rules, so that it's very clear what meetings are what, and what actions are appropriate, and what's, when, when straw votes are real votes, and when straw votes aren't real votes. So we, we have that in the proposed rules. Mr. Farrar, if you wouldn't mind just taking a brief moment to, to walk through what's being presented, and any other additional comments that you have.
Yes, thank you, Manager. Madam Mayor, members of the council, with respect to this issue, I think it's appropriate to perhaps, since we're adopting a new calendar and considering ways of streamlining the process, that we also take this opportunity to have the Law Department, upon your direction, do a revision to the general rules of the council rules, speaking to procedure. With respect to the proposed revisions, what the Law Department is proposing to do is to ensure that the public hearing, which is a mandatory hearing under the Illinois Municipal Code, that it be very clear under the council rules, that that hearing is conducted first before votes of any kind on any budget line item are conducted. I think that for purposes of clarity and compliance with the Open Meetings Act, that's a very prudent step. Any votes that the council thereupon takes after the conclusion of the public hearing relative to budget line items, those are proper, as the public hearing will be concluded. There will be no issues regarding the propriety of those actions, and those will certainly permit for council deliberation and voting on budget line items. So upon your direction, if you see fit to give it to the department tonight, what I will do is then draft the rules, and we can take that to a rules committee and have those adopted.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen?
Yes, I move that we direct the Law Department to prepare a revision of Section 13 of the council rules regarding proposed rules of procedure concerning budget consideration and adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I don't have any problem with that, as long as the Rules Committee is going to be able to do a full review before introducing it to the council, because frankly, I didn't really study this piece of our agenda. So I'm, I'm concerned that we all have a good opportunity to discuss this and the rules. The Rule, First Rules Committee in July, so.
It could be July or August, I mean, whatever the council's pleasure is.
Yeah, and Alderman Rainey, I, we have not prepared them specifically for the reason you've raised.
Exactly.
So we will now go back. I, given the lateness in the month, I'm not sure that we'll have them for your July meeting, but we will have them for your August meeting.
Fine, that's fine.
So we, we would just ask for a motion, a business-by-motion action, to direct the Law Department to prepare a revision to the council's rules.
Been moved and seconded. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, City Manager, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
I wanted to share some information with, with you all. You guys remember Ray Summers, who stood up here and, you know, battled and held up some positions? Ray is extremely sick. And so it may be prudent, those of you who've had a relationship in the past, to try to stop by and see him, okay? I could give you the particulars. The other, so I want to send out a greeting to Ray and his family, and say that our prayers are with you. Also, I had heard that Sonny Robinson had returned from Florida ill as well. So again, on behalf of the entire council, we want to send out our prayers to him as well. So catch up with him, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
We have a roll call vote.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Nine.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes.